Okay, like the call to order tonight's Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission Regular Meeting, Thursday, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We will start by rising paint stretch of the flag.
......................................................
Thank you very much, and just as a reminder, everybody, make sure your mics are on and close enough to be heard. And as a quick reminder to all the gentlemen in the room, tomorrow's Valentine's Day. I'm throwing it out there. Okay, can we get note to roll, please?
Noted, there is a form, and it's full.
Thank you. Item number four, approval of tonight's agenda. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item number five, conflicts of interest or expedite contact. Does anybody have anything they need to disclose or share? Seeing none, we'll move on to number six, approval of the minutes, Planning Commission Regular Meeting, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion to approve minutes, Planning Commission Regular Meeting, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, public comment on items not scheduled for the public hearing or on tonight's agenda. Does anybody have anything they would like to bring up that is not on the agenda or not for public hearing? Seeing none, we'll move on to number eight, Commissioner's comments. Does anybody have anything before we get started? All right, number nine, public hearing. Purpose of the public hearing is to receive public comments regarding petition PC two-four dash zero zero four, applicant Oxford Real Estate LLC one zero five zero three, Citation Drive, Suite one hundred, Brighton, Michigan, request for special land use for a skilled nursing home and rehabilitation facility on parcel zero four, three four, two zero zero, zero two five, along West Drainer Road near Pontiac Road. And just to remind everybody, the way this will work, any members of the public that wish to address the commission, start by giving your name, your address, and your position that you'd like to discuss. You'll be given three minutes. Everybody will have a chance to discuss, and all direction comes to the chair. Nobody will speak twice until everybody's had a chance to speak. So does anybody have anything they would like to discuss regarding this petition?
You should have Mateo speak first, because then they'll know what...
This is true.
And you'll have to open a public hearing.
This is true.
That's the motion, open the public hearing.
You want to start, and then we'll...
Sure. Hey, good evening. Good eve... Good evening, Mateo Waslaw, Bookworm, Workman Associates for the Township Planners. So tonight, you have in front of you for your public hearing, a special land use at the preliminary site plan. It's an application for a ninety-bed acute care and rehabilitation center. I'm going to kind of go through, just a generalization of my notes. We'll go through kind of the standards for development for these types of projects, and then we will look at the special land use standards, and then after that, after the answer questions, then I can... I'll talk to Jim. So the facility would be a ninety-bedroom nursing home, as we discussed. Nursing homes are special land uses in the R-two zone, so if something is permitted to meet standards, you technically must approve. If something is a special land use, it does give the Plan Commission a little bit of discretion as far as requirements that they may have with the site, so long as they are reasonable and tied to the finding of facts in your ordinance. As it relates to that, those standards are in session four and five point one, four of your ordinance, and I've referenced them tonight in our report. The building will be fifty-one thousand five hundred fifty square feet and occupy approximately half the site. There will be seventy-two resident rooms and nine semi-private rooms. Adilities will include a vistro, salon, kitchen, some living area. The project is proposed to employ about a hundred and seven employees, with the largest shift being approximately fifty, and shift changes being at eight AM, four PM, and midnight. The south and eastern portions of the site are remain in their natural state. However, we do kind of bring up that the side portion, the eastern portion of the site, will still be of a developable size for future consideration. Nothing's been discussed tonight, nothing's been proposed, it's just worth you understanding that other portions of the site won't be of a developable size if and on the road those opportunities present. The plan in front of you tonight does reflect some changes that the applicant made to the plan after we met with them. All site plans require a pre-application meeting. It's an opportunity for us to give them some feedback, they had some... The site was arranged in a couple of ways that we requested some changes on, and what you have in front of you tonight reflects those changes, so we would kind of like to acknowledge that in the process of things. And for order of process, special land uses, preliminary site plan, and then final site plan are all approved by the Plan Commission. There's no part of this that will go to the board. With that, looking at the site description, the site's nineteen point two acres gross, eighteen acres net, and the development area, where each building is ten acres. Your future land use has the site designated as Village Residential, twelve thousand square foot lots, and the surrounding uses include single-family housing and institutional uses, single-family housing along the east and south with institutional uses to the west. There's no issues with placement as far as site setbacks, height, placement, they're all but there. Natural features, the site does have some slopes and mild depressions, there's a wet land, a long Drainer Road that is likely regulated by Eagle, so the applicant has acknowledged, and we've called out the fact that they'll need some permits to do work in and around that area for the process that we put them through in Oxford. Preliminary, then you go get your permits, everybody, all your agencies sign up on your permits, you come back for final, so they don't need it now, but they do need to acknowledge that they'll need it, which they have. There are woodlands present along the western half of the site, this is the area that will be affected by the development itself. There are scattered tree clusters kind of on the remainder, eastern and southern portion of the site. The site plan does indicate where existing trees and vegetation will remain and or be protected during construction. Again, there's kind of the development areas, kind of the western northern half, or I guess the better way to say it would be the northwestern portion of the site is kind of where the development area is. There will be some extensive grading required in that area to accommodate the building and the improvements. Access and circulation, the site will be accessed by a twenty-seven-foot wide drive off West Drainer Road. RCOC did provide some recommended improvements to the access for the site, which they have incorporated into their plan. They did provide a traffic impact study, which kind of highlighted it was specifically designed around nursing home uses, which accounted for the type of traffic that they were looking to generate. And there's an eight-foot safety path shown along West Drainer. There are some safety path considerations tonight that the Plan Commission need to make as it relates to Pathfinder, the Iroquois, I'm going to let Mr. Sharp go through that. Parking standards, they've met all of the parking standards as it relates to dimension, placement, count, ADA, all of that. Essential services and utilities, again, I kind of defer to Jim on that one, the one point that I'll make is that from a service perspective, we do have the fire department review all plans, and with the exception of citing some issues about wanting fire suppression and circulation, it did not cite any concerns with the potential increase in life safety services these types of facilities typically generate. They've acknowledged that they will likely need to service the site as needed, but they did not cite concerns with their capacity to do so. Landscaping, landscaping isn't really due until final, we only get to provide minor information at preliminary, however, they have kind of given us a full landscaping plan, and they've met those standards associated with it. Again, the areas outside of the development plan are proposed to be left as-is. As I'd said, their landscaping standards have been met, one of the things that I've kind of put on their radar, and we can discuss further tonight, but again, isn't due till final, is along the west side where they provided their buffer requirements, it looks as though the new landscaping is actually kind of at the lower end of the area where there'd be grading, so I've kind of asked if we can't move those further up the grade so that they, you know, if they're too far down the grade, and the building's up here, what's the purpose of landscape screening? And we've discussed it a little bit, I know the applicant's here tonight and can speak to those things, but that was the only thing that we kind of noted in the landscaping that we thought was worth conversation. Lighting, again, lighting is due at final, they did provide some preliminary cut sheets for the types of lighting that they plan to use, and those light temperatures are set to the new lighting standards of thirty-five hundred Kelvin. They have indicated they're aware of the requirements of ten point two E, which is your lighting standards, and that they will provide a photometric plan that gives us the information necessary to assess those. I would say as we kind of work through this evening, one of the conversations for these types of facilities, and again, I'll let the applicant kind of speak to it as well as, obviously, there is kind of a twenty-four-seven nature about these sites, not in the essence that it is hustle and bustle of twenty-four-seven, but this is a nursing care facility that will provide services to their residents who are staying for an extended period of time. And so with that, I guess, you know, we kind of want to just have the conversation about site lighting, parking lot lighting, and things of that nature, and there are, your new lighting standards are a big improvement over your old ones, and do kind of highlight standards as far as when lights can be on, when they can be off, it does offer the Plan Commission some discretion when it comes to that. Again, we will, we will say yea or nay to that at final, not tonight, but it's worth tonight you asking questions, if you have them, of the applicant as it relates to those things. From an architecture standpoint, fiberglass board, glazing, and metal parapets are the primary exterior materials, textured stucco and brace metal canopies define the building's entrance, and they will, they will need to provide elevations of all sides at final, during preliminary, what they've provided is appropriate. So those are the site standards as we discussed, now we'll kind of take a look at the special land use standards. It is never my intent to sit here and read you for beta my review, so I'm, but given it's special land use, so I'll kind of try to paraphrase, and then kind of provide you the responses that we looked at. As it relates to your standard, special land use requirements, the site, you know, it must be compatible with adjacent uses of lands in terms of size, character, location, reduction of negative impacts, things of that nature. Provide service, provide a service or fulfill a need for the township, so when we looked at this, we did see that proposed nursing homes do provide services of need in the township and the region as a whole. The design is conducive with that of a residential function, they've tried to provide some residential design elements to the site. Lighting and landscaping considerations, we've kind of discussed, that'll be important to kind of figure out with the applicant as we go on, as it's based on twenty-four hours operation and screening requirements. The proposed land use must be consistent and promote the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance and all other applicable codes, with the exception of a few conditions we've put in tonight, they have met the standards of your zoning ordinance, excuse me. This proposed special land use must not pose an unreasonable impact upon the natural environment, so obviously, I mean, there is a portion of the site that will need to be cleared in order for the development itself, however, the applicant has, you know, A, placed the building in a nature that's further away from the single-family homes, and at least for now is, and I say at least for now because there's a portion of the site that's big enough to be developed in the future, but for now, as called, that those areas are to remain in their natural state, and is outlined in the plan. The special land use must be compatible with the capacity of public services and facilities, so again, you can talk to utilities, I've talked to the fire department, I think that they are sufficient in that nature. Sorry, just getting through here. The proposed special land use must be consistent with vehicle turning patterns, traffic flow intersections, view obstructions, ingress and egress, off-street parking. They've met the parking, they've met your access standards, we all know, traffic is an issue, right? It doesn't really matter what development, we're looking at where, traffic is an issue. Again, that's kind of why we go through the process with RCOC, that's why you have traffic impact studies that we look at, but as it relates to obtaining the necessary permits for traffic and the way that they designed their site, they have met your standards in that regard. The proposed land use must be designed, located, planned, and operated so the public health, safety, and welfare are protected. The site's been basically in the placement of the building, some of the screening requirements that they've provided, and just kind of the consideration again of the mass of the building, the placement of it as it relates to single-family residential nearby. We do feel as though the site has done its best to address kind of the welfare needs of the community. And then, the proposed special land use must be consistent with the goals, objectives, and future land use described in the master plan. So your current master plan has this as Village Residential, which is more inclined to a single-family style use development, obviously, the property has a, there's a residential character about it, and there isn't a residential use to it, but there's a character about it, and it is outlined as a, as a special land use in R-two, so we don't see any major conflicts with the future land use map. And the future land use, or the master plan also speaks to the provision of diverse housing options and aging-in-place facilities. Again, it's not a senior-centered home, but it does provide, you know, services that are in need for an aging population in the township. So those are your general special land use requirements, whenever we have a special land use, we're going to go through all those. Ones that relate specifically to these types of facilities, the nursing homes, is that all ingress and egress shall be directly onto County Primary Road, check. Minimum land area per person cared for shall be three thousand square feet, the numbers are in your review, but check. And all buildings are setback at least seventy-five feet from all property lines, check, they've met that. So with that, we've got our standards, we've got our special land use, Jim will go up next, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have this time, I'll kind of work my right to left with Commissioner Woolsey at first. Not to put you on the spot.
No, no, no.
Even though I did.
No, no, I don't know, it's fine. Let's see, so construction entrance location, we talked about that briefly. Is there the opportunity to make sure we don't have Pathfinder, that road be abused from a construction standpoint?
From a zoning ordinance perspective, no.
Right.
However, I do know that the building department and Jim's team kind of work, when sites are under construction, do work to make sure that certain standards for the reduction of nuisances like dust with silt fence, making sure the roads are washed or up, you know, but the drains are backed and swept, things of that nature. The applicant will have their time in front of you, and you can definitely have a conversation about what they may be able to do in ways of construction, traffic, there isn't anything in the zoning ordinance that I could enforce. Building department's on top of things, and we do work with them on it.
It's all about, I'm thinking about being a good neighbor as if construction progressed, that's all.
Sure, no, appreciate it.
Let's see, on the site lighting, we talked a little bit about that earlier, you know, I'm picturing if I look on Pathfinder, looking out my front window, and I'm looking at this new facility to the, to the west, there'll be parking lot pole lights there, and that maybe as we go through this process, there could be opportunity maybe to screen the light that would, if I'm looking up at a twenty-foot pole, say, that that could somehow be shut, blocked, I'd be maybe potentially asking the applicant if something could be done to, to be respectful of our neighbors in the area and, and shield that light somehow. I know that there, excuse me, there's trees that will be, that'll act as some sort of a screen, and the distance is quite far from there, but this will be a kind of a shock, I think, to that area to say, you know, it's all trees now, and then all of a sudden there's going to be parking lot and light poles, and I know that there's been some discussion about dimming of those fixtures past a certain time, and that would be part of the final, but that's also in our ordinance, I believe.
Yeah, and again, I...
...
The lighting standards were updated with the RCO last year, and are a vast improvement over what you had before, so there is, they will need to provide us with a lot of information, photometrics, and, you know, and information about light angle, glare, reduction, all that kind of stuff, so we can make sure the lights are faced in the right direction, and potentially, depending on what they put forward, a conversation about dimming at certain hours and things like that.
The, the screen with trees, I believe I saw some trees were being added along that between Pathfinder and the existing trees that will remain, but there's some additional added, did I read that right, there were some...
Yeah, those, yes, and actually, those were, that was something that they added for us, because the way they had their plan quadrant out, it's sometimes it's hard to make sure what lines up with what, but that, that extra trees are actually there to assist with additional screening of the dumpster and the generator pad and that, that part of the facility, and that is, that is along with what will remain on the site.
Speaking of the dumpster and the generator pad, I noticed that those were moved to the front, or they're in the front, not close to, say, Residential, which is to the, more to the south than east, so I think that that's a benefit to the community around that area, that those were moved to that location. The traffic volumes, I didn't quite, I'm not sure if someone I can speak, maybe the applicant can speak to the traffic volume study that was done, some of the numbers didn't quite make sense to me, and I didn't understand the peak, the peak hours or the peak trips, trips during peak time, maybe so that way to put it.
Yeah, I think, I can, I know what the applicant speak to if they can, and I would welcome, Jim, see you guys as well, but I mean, the way it was structured is around the nursing home style of use, but whether or not it, whether or not it accurate, I don't say accurately, we've talked about like shift change, you know what I mean, and the traffic that might be generated there, and those numbers don't seem to be reflected in that, but I don't want to get too far ahead of it without there to be so long of the applicant to discuss it, you know, and or whatever thoughts Jim may or may not have had about it.
And from what I was reading, the shift changes would happen at eight four and midnight, eight AM, four PM, midnight, and if there's about fifty people working during the day, that could be potentially fifty vehicles, right? And then shift overlap, they may be between seven thirty AM and eight thirty AM, you know, there could be fifty vehicles entering and thirty leaving, plus minus, and I didn't quite see that, those numbers in that, that study, so I, some further explanation would be helpful there.
Okay.
The, let's see, emergency response, and maybe, I'm not sure if you're the appropriate person to talk about that, or if it's the fire department, you know, how would they respond to emergency on a site like that, and I know that they've reviewed for fighting a fire, for example, their firearms and all that stuff, and maybe I shouldn't be asking the chair this question, I don't know. Are you a firefighter, aren't you?
I was.
Okay. But do you have any information on how emergency response would be happening to this site? I'm thinking about sirens and that type of stuff.
Yeah, I mean, all I can, all I can speak to is that, again, fire department's involved in pre-app, they're involved in preliminary review, and I know that even, even after their review came out, I, I made time to talk with the, the fire marshal to just kind of, again, pick his brain about it, and he said, you know, yeah, these sites typically require an increase in life safety services, but he wasn't concerned about the capacity to do so. Now, as far as the procedures as, you know, do they, do they come in full sirens all the time, do they not, that I, that I couldn't speak to.
Sure, sure. Okay.
Typically, when the guys are coming in for these types of scenes, if they're coming in off Drainer, once they cross Pathfinder, they're going to be shutting down the sirens as they come in, one, because it wouldn't disrupt these neighbors, and wake up everybody in the nursing home. So, I mean, when they're pulling in that driveway, they're going to be shutting them down, typically.
Thank you. Just a couple more things, neutral colors, you know, I think we, we read something in the, in the, the special use about blending with the surrounding neighborhood, and the exact language, I'd have to find it, but I noticed in the pictures of the, the front of the building kind of have a, they're not, they don't appear to be neutral here, they seem to stand out a little bit more, maybe some more modern colors, if there's opportunity by the applicant to potentially adjust that so it's maybe blends a little bit more, and it doesn't maybe go against any of their, if they have a corporate, you know, theme for their...
You're asking McDonald's to be green.
Whatever that might, yeah, I just, it would be something that I think would help in one with the community and less, less of an impact, so that's just, let's see. And if, if homes were built in the area, is my last question, starting to take up so much time, if, if homes were to be built in that property, do you have a ballpark, what that might look like?
You read my mind on, I was like, this is, this is going to come up. Yeah, no, so under the current zoning R-two, with the net developable area of the entire site, accounting for roads, things of that nature, I calculated, you probably could get twenty-six to twenty-seven single-family homes on the site. I, I don't think I'm out of my way in saying that that would require a safety clear cut and even more grading be done. As it relates to your master plan, if you were ever to follow the current master plan and go to the Village Residential, you're probably looking at closer to fifty single-family housing units on the site. So under your current zoning, just to be clear, you probably could get twenty-six to twenty-seven homes on the site, but that would, again, that would be clear cutting the site, grading the site. Thank you. Yeah? No problem. Commissioner Leishen?
Yep, I'm okay, my questions have been addressed, so.
Don's good at that, that's why we let him go first, he clears everybody out.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Sure, no problem. Commissioner Bailey?
Just a couple of questions, with Pathfinder being right there, I know we've got the safety path running along Drainer, and it kind of is the, the path to nowhere because it stops, you know, the end of their property, but across the street is where the, the main path picks up. Is it out of line to request some of those motion lights or whatever for people that are walking down that path to be able to cross Drainer, pick up the other side of the path, and then kind of with that, if you're going to have thirty, forty cars pulling in and out of here every eight hours for shift change, have they thought about putting some type of motion light, maybe control traffic at shift change that would blink other times, I don't know if that's normal?
Yeah, I mean, I would, when Jim's up, I would solicit his comments about the safety path, and as it relates to the traffic, is that something, Jim, have we ever seen RCOC come back with a recommendation like that, some sort of?
They wouldn't put one there because it's too close to Pontiac Street.
Okay. So that's, my reference was like, I was wondering, RCOC didn't think that was appropriate for that, or would they ever call it out?
Yeah, I can address that when I get up there.
Perfect. Thanks, Jim.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Turner?
I know they, they show on their drawings, three handicap parks, parking sites, but if you could put the plot plan up so we could see it, I'd like to see those, and I'll keep going.
No, I, yeah, I know, it's going to take a minute.
Page nine.
Is this a fair enough one to use?
That one's okay if you can see it, and you see where they are.
There you go.
Yeah, there's a handicap parking right there, and those be moved to the opposite end of that parking lot, they'd be much closer to an entrance into the building.
Are you, are, are you saying that these three spaces go over here?
Over there.
The main entrance is here.
Okay.
You're saying move them over here, I saw Mr. ...
Well, I was thinking over there, because there is an entrance at the end of that wing, right there.
Would, would that be an emergency, that's a egress exit only? Okay.
Okay.
So as, as they're placed now, they are the closest they could be to the main entrance?
Understand.
Gotcha.
Second item was with the type of residence you're going to have there, some of them are going to be there for quite a while, is my understanding. Right now, I don't see any kind of a patio area or anything on the plan, external that would allow those people to go outside and sit in the sun or, or things that way.
I...
Is that considered? Would you think about something like that?
The petitioner's going to have the time to...
I was going to say, like, can I keep his notes?
Okay.
Yeah.
And the, the last one I had was along what would be the west side of the property. It shows on the page that I'm looking at that we're at least fifteen feet short of having the seventy-five feet setback from the property on.
You mean for the...
I'm wondering if the whole thing can be moved over.
Are you referring to the building?
Hmm?
You're referring to the building?
I'm on the, be the west side of the building.
Right, so, just so you can see, so this... Right, so, just so you can see, so this dash line is the seventy-five foot sideback, side setback line? And this, the closest point of the building to the west property line is about eighty feet.
Well, what I'm looking at shows a seventy-five foot line inside of that driveway.
Well, yes, the driveway is within the seventy-five feet, but the building is not.
But do we, do we have enough room to put the landscaping and stuff outside of that? Or should we look at moving the entire building a little further to the east to get within the seventy-five foot requirement?
Well, to be clear, they have met the seventy-five foot requirement. The building is, is seven, is more than seventy-five feet back. The drive is, can be within that setback.
Building setback, it's not a parking lot or not a driveway setback, it's only for the building, that's what the setbacks refer to.
Okay, I didn't gather that from reading the documentation for the setback.
That's, I mean, duly noted, it's section five, so sometimes your setbacks, um, are not the standards that you would find in your R two. The standard for this one is that all buildings shall be setback at least seventy-five feet from the property lines.
Okay.
That, that's where that comes from, um.
Okay, well, I looked at it, there was plenty of room on the other side. Just move everything over a little bit.
And your point being in an effort to, to even get the drive out of the seventy-five?
Anything?
Okay.
Yeah, because you got traffic that's gonna go around there and you'd like to have a, a good buffer along that side of the property line.
Agreed, and just because the buffer's an important part of the conversation, to the west are the institutional uses. Um, they're not residential. I'm not saying good or bad, I'm just making the point. Okay, did you have any other comments or questions?
No, I'll, I'll let him go with that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner. Commissioner Bailey?
Yeah, my concern, or my only concern, my, I guess, one of my concerns is the, you've got single-family homes on the north, the south, and the east of the property. And the question will be, you know, and when the lighting gets pulled together, what did, what is it these homes are gonna see? Or gonna be forced to see from their properties? So, there's nothing, nothing more irritating than the light going, coming into your, your window that's on twenty-four seven, so. I would be a little bit concerned about that, or at least I wanna understand that. The other piece was, and Andy already touched on it, was this traffic studies seem to really understate the, uh, the amount of traffic that would be going in and out of that property.
Okay.
That's it.
Commissioner Austin?
Just a couple, um mostly the entrance, there's only one entrance, and due to EMS and everything like that, normally what they'll do on these facilities, they'll have a emergency exit out the back, or emergency exits, so they can uh, and it would be locked, but it would just be for emergency purposes because of the, obviously during the holidays or there's a lot of cars and those vehicles can't get in and out, so having an emergency vehicle to be able to get there uh, where it might be something that we might need to look at. And then also too, I didn't see, but do we have a stormwater management plan for this property? I didn't see that in there.
Um, yeah.
Okay, alright, I, I was just curious with that because I didn't have, for some reason, I must overlooked it, but, uh.
It was only a hundred and five pages, I don't know how you could have missed that.
And, and so obviously, I was just concerned with the run, uh, runoff of the neighborhoods. So, I just wanted to make, make sure that we're very careful on that, just due to obviously water flow.
Sure, and I would, and Jim will go through that.
Yeah, I'll ask him that stuff, Jim, and also too, with the Pathfinder, uh, they're gonna be putting, obviously, eventually some houses on Pathfinder. Are they gonna put a fence down that or a, um, privacy fence? I didn't see it in the plans, but, uh, to put a privacy fence there, so when they build the house, they don't have to build a privacy fence when they do that, it's already put up.
Are you talking about in the eastern portion of the site? So, just to be very clear, there is no proposal to put anything on that site right now.
Okay.
My, the purpose, what I was calling for in the, in the in the review was just pointing out that the remaining portion of the site is still a developable size, but there's no proposal at this time for that. If they were to bring some proposal for it, they would have to go through the standard zoning review, buffer standards, lands, all that kind of stuff.
I didn't hope we had to cover that now due to them putting that building there and due to the houses on that Pathfinder to see and everything? If they wanted to have a privacy fence or something addressed to that.
Yeah, all you, all you can look at is, all, all you can consider is what's in front of you. Um, and again, my purpose of bringing it up is that, just so that there's kind of this understanding that the, that, that site, that remaining portion of the site being like that may not be in perpetuity. They, they could bring a proposal for it later to develop that site. And again, at that time, again, these conversations would start up again about views, screening, things of that nature.
Also too, uh, the entrance end, where it has the circle, the turning radius might be a little too tight for our firing EMS to get around there, um, without backing up and going through.
I saw it, yeah, I know we, I believe, I know they provided circulation.
It's just really tight.
Yeah, no, 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 it's.
So, like, having a, uh, instead of having the fire truck have to back up a little bit and then go, um, that's, takes some time, so maybe widening that out, um and just giving it a little bit more openness towards the, uh, circle, or maybe even widening it out just a little bit more so they can make that turn.
Yeah, I mean, these, so these, these are all things that you could discuss with the applicant as it relates to standards to force the cha- force the change, require the change. We would have to rely on zoning and or feedback from the fire chief about, I don't know, I mean, you're bringing up valid points. We all kind of stay in our own, it comes to expertise as to what we can push and what we can't, but again, it's all fair conversation with the applicant.
Yeah. Those are the only concerns that I realize.
Thank you. Commissioner Durr?
No, questions been answered.
Okay, and now next time I start left, so just throw your hands up. Alright, thank you very much, I'll let Jim come up and. Alright, um, thank you, planning commissioners, Jim Sharp, the township engineering consultant. Um, we should have our review letter, that's dated January twenty-eighth in front of you. And with regards to, um, you know, the special land use, we're just really looking for items that are key components to the infrastructure and so forth. My comments in here are more about the preliminary site plan aspects of it. So, with regards to special land use, you know, all of the requirements from our perspective have been met from an engineering perspective there. I'm not gonna reiterate what Mateo has already gone through. So, I'm just gonna kind of go pretty quickly through my letter here and then open it up to any comments there. With regards to all the site grading, all the site grading requirements have been met for preliminary site plan. Again, as Mateo indicated, you go through your preliminary, then you go through all your, we'll call it, you know, final engineering, you go get all your permits, and then you come back for the final. So, for what's required for preliminary site plan, um, they have adequately done all the, uh, all the, all the stuff for the grading aspects. With regards to the sanitary sewer, um, this development, uh, there's sanitary sewer that runs down Pathfinder and also down Iroquois, and there is adequate sanitary sewer to be able to service this type of, of a development. So, we don't have any issues with that. We had a couple of comments, um, when we give our reviews, we also provide a red line mark of their plans and we provide that back to the applicant, primarily to assist them as they go through the final design stage. But again, with regards to the sanitary sewer, uh, we have no issues there. Same with the, uh, the water distribution system, they're planning to connect at two locations on there, one on Pathfinder and then looping it around the building and coming back out to Iroquois. So, they're completing a loop system there, so no issues with, uh, water capacity in this area, or with regards to the, uh, you know, being able to provide fire protection or anything of that nature will be fine. Right, with regards to the stormwater, I mean, that's, there's a stormwater plan right there, so yeah, they're taking everything into a series of catch basins and so forth, running it back into a pond that's in the southwest corner of the property, which then outlets to an existing sewer that is on, uh, on Pathfinder, again, so. They have met and will be able to meet the stormwater requirements for the township.
Even with the elevation change?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we saw preliminary thing, you know, going in there, they can do their final profiles and so forth.
In detail, so.
But, you know, from what the information that's been provided to us, yeah, they'll be able to, you know, when they do their land balancing, they'll be able to, uh, you know, collect all their stormwater, run it back to those ponds and so forth, to meet the township requirements for that. Um, with regards to our pavement sidewalks and curving, all the pavement, they did submit a lot of pavement sections on there, so we're happy with all of that, it meets the township requirements for that. Standard heavy-duty integral curving, the parking spaces meet the requirement. They did speak to the road commission, they do have preliminary feedback from them, so I know traffic has been, uh, discussed a little bit. Road commission came back and said that they need to put a bypass lane on the north side of the road and then acceleration, deceleration lanes on the south side, which they have provided for us. Eight-foot wide safety path, so there is a safety path, I know Mr. Bailey brought that up briefly, so there is one in front of the condos that are on Pathfinder right now, so they are extending the safety path across the frontage of their property per township ordinance. And they are, have submitted for a waiver request for the sidewalks that are supposed to be placed on Pathfinder and Iroquois and doing a, in lieu of contribution, which is allowed, the planning commission has to approve that. And safety path committee, planning commission have to approve that, and I believe that the township board is the one who gives the final go-ahead on that. Uh, we provided a cost estimate, it's in the range of, I believe, sixty-four thousand dollars in order to, uh, in order to negate putting the pathway slash sidewalk on Pathfinder and Iroquois. So, again, that would be a, I believe, a condition of approval here tonight, would that be accurate?
Yeah, it would be a, it would be a separate motion.
Okay.
Regardless of whether they do recommend or they do not recommend.
So, it's a recommendation, ultimately it goes to the township board for final approval.
Is that a concrete or an asphalt, uh, walkway? Cause I know it's the, uh, on the other side, it's concrete.
It was estimated as concrete.
Okay.
It was estimated at concrete. At about, I know that you're into the numbers there, so, uh.
Yes, I am.
Nine dollars and twenty cents a square foot. Roughly, so that was the number that we used there, and, uh, came out to be about sixty-four thousand four hundred dollars. So, that was it, that would be, so they would still be putting the eight-foot wide asphalt safety path on Drainer Road along their frontage to hopefully continue this down the road in the future. And, um, but they are asking for a waiver on the other two. With regards to the comment about crossing, you know, to try to get to the other side, again, that was something that would have to probably petition to the road commission, I, I, I don't believe that they would re, that they would allow one there. The road commission would prefer that it be at the intersection of Pontiac Street or a place where people could safely cross, you know, there's a stop sign at least on one side of the road there, but they don't want people going across the street there. We have a hard enough time getting one right here at Dunlap Road, believe it or not, but when we told them our nearest crossings are two mile, a mile that way, two miles that way, they said, okay, we'll give you one. But they don't like crossing at non-signalized intersections, so. And again, Pontiac Street does not actually come to their property. And so, I think that that would probably be a challenge to get something to go across the street there. Let's be talked about that. Construction access, I noted that, um, Don, and that would be something that we could, I guess, ask the applicant, uh, but that would seem to make sense of the construction access be off of Drainer Road to try to minimize the traffic on Pathfinder there. They just put in their temporary stone drive and they would use that until they get to a time of final pavement and then they would tear that out and and pave it in there, so that would seem logical to me. And that's, I guess, we'll leave that to the applicant. With regards to the traffic, um, again, that's been discussed a lot, and I know that there are shifts and so forth that are gonna be happening at certain hours of the day. You know, as Mateo said, you got theoretically, you have twenty-six homes on this site. If it was constructed under the current zoning, average trip, there's ten average trips a day, if you do that, that's two hundred and sixty. So, whether it's twenty-six homes or whether it's this facility here of fifty people leaving during a shift or something, I, I think it's a toss-up there, really. The road, Drainer Road is obviously a primary county road. So, again, road commission, we kind of rely on them to do that traffic study and to, uh, to look at that, so if they have any issues about some of the peak hour flows or whatever you had, they would look into that. Maybe they did and that's why they were requiring the bypass lane and the acceleration, decelerations as well. Traffic safety path crossing, emergency, taxes, and stormwater, so I think that that's my spiel there, and I would open it up, I'm not gonna go down the road down the line like he does, so I'll just open up everybody with any questions that you may have regarding any of your aspects.
I have a, maybe one quick question. If, so part of this property is undeveloped and Mateo indicated that maybe, you know, twenty-six single-family homes could be put in there. Would there be enough water and sewer capacities to support those additional homes?
There would be, um, we've been working from past, uh, reports and from new reports that we're working on. We definitely have had a certain amount of, we call them RUs, set aside for this property, and so, yes, you could certainly build that many homes. I believe there's even more that are allotted to this particular development, or to this particular property.
Okay, thank you. For the parking, there, I think there's roughly right around seventy-nine or eighty spots. Are you guys concerned with if there's fifty people shift change? Having people come and be able to find parking spots? Do they have an overflow or an employee parking lot? So, visitors have guests, they, if they, if they come, they don't have to worry about waiting for a spot to park? Or they're not now parking on Pathfinder and walking in or on the main entrance?
Yeah, again, I, I would probably have to defer to the applicant on that, the way that the ordinance and so forth reads, yours have required so many parking spaces per square foot. And if there's an issue during their shift change and people gotta wait and stuff, then that's something that they're gonna have to work out, I believe, so, we don't specifically look at that. Any other questions, engineering related at this time?
Thank you.
Alright, I'll be right over here. Do you have any more? Thanks.
Okay, so, the way this will work is, one, we'll have to have a motion to open the public hearing. But before you do that, uh, we'll give an opportunity for the applicant to present or ask any questions or answer any questions if you'd like.
Hi, I'm John Sevitsky, one of the architects for the project. And do you want me to just talk about the, uh, special land use or the entire?
Yeah, if you just wanna kind of give an overview of what you're, what you're looking for and maybe address some of the questions that you've already heard?
Yeah, for the, the special land use, the three requirements, um, per the ordinance, we have met, um, the seventy-five foot setback that we have along Pathfinder and Iroquois. Seventy-five feet is required, and from Pathfinder, we're providing for about four hundred and twenty-five feet. And on Iroquois, we're providing around three hundred and seventy-five feet rather than this seventy-five feet that are required, so. The owner has requested that the building be put in the northwest corner to put it as far away from the residential uses that are adjacent to the site. And, um, so we have done that, and, um, some of the other, the, the company has eight properties in southeast Michigan. Many of the properties are on sites that are larger than what is needed. So, if you, if you've been at our, uh, Romeo facility or the Pinckney facility, you'll see that there is, um, undeveloped land there, and they, it's been undeveloped for. and it's been undeveloped for ever since those projects have been built, so we, the owner has no plans to develop the excess property on this site. And the traffic study, we did a traffic impact study that the road commission requested, and they reviewed it and said it meets the requirements as far as distance to the intersection. They've recommended extending the passing lane and adding the deceleration lane on Drainer Road, which we've done. There's a wetland which complicated things, originally, we had the drive further away from Pathfinder, but we had to swing it around the wetland. And the eight-foot safety path, we've also gone around the wetland and provided the setback from the wetland as well. And I, I couldn't hear some of what the conversation was earlier, but if you have any other questions as far as the special land use or the site plan, I also have the civil engineer on the project here, so he'll be able to answer any questions on the civil side of the project.
Can I ask?
I was going to ask Mr. Chair if it's okay for us to address that. Yeah, go ahead.
So can you divulge a little more on how the quantities of traffic for peak times were developed? Because we understand the fourteen at peak times, can you, can you memory on that a little bit, how those, how those numbers were generated?
The traffic impact study was based on standards for nursing home and generated using those standard tables for the the number of cars per hour and stuff, do you have some information on the traffic impact study?
I'm Tim Zimmer, I'm with Livingston Engineering, and so the traffic impact stud, I hesitate to call it a study because those can be, that means a lot of things. This, this information that you have there is, was a warrant analysis, and that was based on warrant analysis, and I'll explain for anyone who doesn't, who isn't familiar with this stuff. For purposes of the driveway design and establishing a setback, the, the amount of passing lane and all that that is incorporated in the driveway entrance. The warrant analysis takes the, what John called tables, they're from the, from the international traffic engineers, it's not international, it's, it's called the I T E manual. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I authored that because it's basically a preliminary analysis of based on studies that, that the, that this group of engineers has published, and it's a, it's a known, it's a known manual that all traffic engineers use, and it has various categories, and in that one of the categories is for for nursing homes, and it's based on the number of beds, and it's, this is aggregated information from a bunch of studies that they've done over time, and that's where the, where the factors, and it's based on the factors you apply for left turns, right turns, in and out of the, out of the site, is all based on, is, is, those factors are multiplied by the, by the total trips on, on Drainer Road that are, and there's a number of places you can find that information, but one of them is Oakland County Road Commission's website. I realize I'm going into the weeds here, but I'm trying to answer your question.
Yeah, I appreciate it, does that account for employees as well?
Well, the, the studies, the aggregated studies that they've done all over the country includes employees, yes. It's not, but just keep in mind, it wasn't done specifically for this site. It's based on studies that they've done all over the country and boiled it all down to methodology for, for warrants, whether or not you need a, a great, you know, a deceleration lane. That was the purpose of this, so it's not really a study, it was a warrant analysis. A traffic study can be, I'm sure you've seen them, sitting on the, on this, you know, it can be a hundred pages long. This was just a, 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 an analysis of what the road commission asked for to, to determine the geometrics of the, of the approach.
Okay, so this is in a summary of a road study, and it's not really looking at the traffic pressure that'll come from M twenty-four at Drainer, making left turns, you know, from, from people that are going to come to this facility on a northbound travel. I did notice that in the analysis or what it claimed to the study that forty-five percent or so would be coming from the east, and that, that gave me some concern because the drainer to the east, before you get the ball, then it's dirt, and I don't find that a lot of people travel that part of the drainer very often. They prefer to stay on paved roads and would probably be putting more pressure on, on M twenty-four. And the reason why I have that concern is because Drainer and M twenty-four is one of our busiest, most dangerous intersections, and putting more pressure on there from northbound traffic heading west to this facility would obviously be a concern.
Yes, that's as a local person, and that's good information, the, the warrant analysis strictly took the traffic counts, directional traffic counts coming from each direction that are on the road commission's website, and took the overall, the total traffic volume in both directions and, and put, put a ratio to that. There was no traffic counts done, you know, all those things that go into a full-blown traffic study.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, I just, I have to get more confused now than I was before, I'm reading this page fifty-three in the packet, and it talks about, it talks about six right turns and eight left turns, peak hour left turns entering the site. I, so eight left turns at peak hours, I'm really having a hard time understanding, I just need clarification. I understand the ratio you're talking about, but it just doesn't make sense when eight AM is the day shift, four PM, and there's fifty employees, I, I'm not a traffic person, but I don't think a bunch of people ride together, that many, so I guess I just need some help with that, you know, traffic is a big thing in this community, and the level of service at Drainer, as Mark mentioned, level of service is very poor right now, and there are quite a few accidents there, so we're trying to understand how we, I know you can't fix that from it's a road commission issue, but good data helps us, I guess, and I don't, look at this data, and it just doesn't make sense to me right now.
Yeah, we, well, we're in contact with the road commission, they've reviewed the plan already, and made those suggestions for the deceleration lane and things, so we haven't had any issues with the number of parking spaces in the other eight facilities, but the I guess we can have a conversation with the road commission.
I'm not really concerned about the parking spaces, can you hear me okay? My, my voice is coming through this, I'm not sure, too close or too far away from the microphone. It's just the number, the report that we have in front of us, it's, the numbers are very deceiving or hard to understand, that's all. So I'm looking for some clarity. I don't know if we can get that at some point in the future, or can you help us understand when we might get that?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll try to get clarification with the help of the road commission as well, to see what, what their input is on that.
Well, okay, I, I don't know if it's road commission, I, Mr. Chair, I
If, if I'm hearing you correctly, I think what the question's going to be is, have we looked at, like, shift change? If you got thirty cars coming in, thirty cars going out, potentially you have sixty cars that are going to be making turns at Drainer every eight hours, in addition to what we have now. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, and Drainer twenty-four is obviously a concern, but also right in front of that, right in front of your future facility, if it was to be built, the number of turns, from what you're saying compared to what I see on the report, is drastically different. Eight left turns during peak hours, six right turns? I, I don't, I just, I need help understanding how, maybe there's, it's just my level of knowledge, but if you have fifty employees showing up, I, help me, help me out here. Can we go to page fifty-three real quick, that packet, can you scroll on the computer, page fifty-three? Do you have control of the computer right there?
Is that, is that your?
Yeah, let me, let me scroll.
I'm sorry, yeah. Which page are you looking for?
Is it, oh wait, I have the packet up, I have the site plan up, let me get to the packet.
You're looking for the, page fifty-three, please, on the packet, if you have that? I'm not sure if I can plug in quickly.
Are you looking, is this the page?
Yes, scroll down to the bottom of that page, please. It's highlighted.
The numbers might just be off, looks like they put those.
A little further, yeah, right there, see the box? Six right turns and then highlighted eight left turns during peak hours. I, I just need help understanding what, what does that represent?
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to get
Okay, okay, fair enough, fair enough.
I'm not a traffic engineer, this is, this hasn't come up at any of the other facilities, that's why I don't have a good answer.
No problem. It just, you know, and when I, we look at this and reading through some of our wording that, you know, the development, negatively impacted the surrounding neighborhood, is it a piece of information that's very helpful? To help assure the community that we're doing the right thing by the community.
For, for instance, at our Romeo facility, it's a hundred-and-twenty-four-bed facility, and it exits onto Main Street or Van Dyke, we put in the deceleration lane, and it's a larger facility, and there's been no issues or comments for left turns or right turns.
Yeah, I, I don't doubt any of that, I'm just looking at the data, and I'm trying to make sense of the data, that's all, it's just a simple question about that, that information, that's all.
I, I think the confusion is, if they're saying there's thirty employees, but yet there's only six right, six left, that's fourteen. But yet there's thirty employees that are going to be turning at peak time, going in, and thirty going out.
And maybe fifty, actually.
That total should be sixty.
Right, there should be some, I don't know.
But, yeah, and that's something, I mean, we could take a little bit.
I mean, I think it's, I, I mean, I think it's, I think it's fair that there's information in the, in the analysis that, that could use further explanation as to whether or not it accounts for employee traffic, or whether or not this is strictly visitor traffic or something in nature, and that that's something that could either, can be prepared for review at final. I mean, that's, that's a fair step for the commission to take, I, I will say that if, from Gemini's perspective, when we do these reviews, if our COC is coming back with, with concerns or recommendations, and they are implementing those, and they have met the standards of the way that the sites are to be designed, there isn't necessarily an avenue for us to, I hate using this word, but to deny this project, because now if our COC was coming saying you have massive issues here, massive problems, then we are at a different crossroads than we are now, however, I do think it's fair, based on what the planning commission's saying and what your report says, and the discrepancies between the vehicles, that further analysis or explanation from you guys at final is warranted to try to understand where, where are these gaps? Do these gaps exist? Is there something that this didn't have to account for, or did it account for it, and how?
Right.
Is that, I mean, is that fair, Commissioner?
It is, I'm just wondering if we can make that a condition of, you know, as the township consultant, that could be a condition.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we can make like a further analysis of, of traffic generation would be part of initial
Just in order to clarify the information that you're providing.
Yeah, to come, yeah, when they come in final, yes, we can make that, we can add that to the condition.
Would that clarification then go back to the road commission for further analysis, once they have better numbers in front of them?
I think it would be fair to see what the clarification is, and based on that, if we learn whether or not our COC should look at it again. Because I don't want to question the integrity, I'm not, I'm not qualified to look at this and, and stamp it with yea or nay, neither's Jim. But I think that if there's something in here where they say, you know, maybe if the numbers have changed based on looking at it this way, then we would want our COC to see it, if the numbers stay the same, but there's further clarification as to why they're staying that way, our COC's already seen that, does that kind of make sense? So the RC, the RC will see, and they're, they have a letter dated October tenth, I don't know if that is or is not in your packet, that should be. So they've gained, they've granted preliminary plan approval, they haven't granted final approval right then yet, so I'll have to go back and do all the, you know, the full engineering design, and if, as a condition of this preliminary site plan, you say, hey, you got to update your traffic study or whatever, report, whatever they're calling it, that would be submitted back to the road commission at the time of the final approval from them, so they, when you go to the road commission so that they don't spend umpteen hours, basically they're submitting more than just a concept plan, you know, but they kind of do a quick review of it and say, yeah, preliminarily, we approved this thing. Just kind of like we're giving preliminary site plan, and then, all right, finalize everything, and then come back for final, they're doing the same thing here, so that information could be reprovided to them.
So can I ask a couple, three or five questions to you then?
Sure.
So once we get, if we get better data about how much traffic comes in and out of this facility, do you know, Jim, if then the, the RCOC looks at that and works on a plan to mitigate that, separate from this development, right? Because I'm not, I'm not sitting here asking these questions to have the developer mitigate these issues, but only to provide enough information for the county to understand what the traffic impact is going to be so that they can analyze it further and make necessary improvements, if that's what's required, right? Is that what would happen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and likewise, if the road commission, if they gave them updated data, and the road commission said, uh-uh, this isn't what you gave to us the first time, and made them make additional improvements, or said this isn't going to work, then they're back here again for, you know, another preliminary site plan, they have to move their entrance around to the other side, or go through the wetland or do something, and then they're back here again.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but moving the entrance wouldn't impact how many cars are coming?
No, no, it would, I'm just, I'm just giving it as an example. Right, the road commission says, no go on this, then they're figuring something else out, and they're coming back to you.
Yeah, but then I, I would believe that it's the road commission that would flag if it's an issue, because there's, I don't see any standards, you know, if, if, if the study that we had, say there's thirty cars leaving in one hour, fifteen cars might be turning left, fifteen cars might be turning right, I can't judge whether that's acceptable or not acceptable.
Yeah, I understand, I was just looking for clarification on the information
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know.
The road commission.
I don't know at what point are there too many cars turning left, that I think would be the road commission's venue to say, you know.
I, I agree, I'm just looking to see how we get that information in front of the road commission, it's really what I'm hoping to have.
Yeah, and that, the road commission approval has to happen before the final site point approval, so.
Okay, very good. Any other questions?
I, Mr. Chair, talk about dumpster pickups and your typical operations there, dumpster pickup and dumpster pickup, trash pickup.
Trash pickup, yeah.
And deliveries. On the, on the, the site plan shows you have a couple of loading areas. Can you, can you describe to us the typical operational hours for something like that? I don't, off the top of my head, I don't have rules within the city that require, you know, material, not in your head.
Oh, I'm, I'm.
Something else, okay.
Yeah.
I thought you had your, the answer.
No, 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 just keep going.
I, I would just like, for our neighbors that are close by, you know, large trucks, trash trucks picking up at five AM. Obviously is not, that would negatively impact the surrounding community and we don't want to do that. So how do you operate your typical facility to help prevent, if you are close to a residential and other, your other facilities? Can you help us? And I know you're the architect, so as I, as I say these things, you're here to represent, so. Can you help us understand how that operates, deliveries and trash pickup?
I do not honestly know when the trash pickups are scheduled at the other facilities. But are, the other facilities, most of them are much closer to the residential areas, you know, than this one is. So the, the owner, if, if you want clarification for final site plan approval. I can find out from the owner when they, they will schedule the.
Yeah, I think it's important to have that, so we have a clear image for a final site plan, if it did go that far. To ensure the community that, again, the wording in our master plan or documents, especially we talked about. Not negatively impacting the community.
Yep.
And your trash pickup, you know, right across the street, tiny, but that would be a negative impact.
Yeah, and there are two loading spots per the, the township requirements. And that's basically just food service trucks for the kitchen, for breakfast, lunch and dinner, they're at set times. You know, from like eight until six, that whole food service. System is over with, so the shipments would happen during those hours.
Okay.
And I think as far as the garbage truck, I think we have some type of rules for hours of operation.
Okay.
But I do know that garbage trucks come through my neighborhood over on Drainer at six thirty in the morning. They're, they're coming through, so.
Right.
They mess up all the neighbors.
As long as it's getting picked up.
Hey.
Thank you, I'll take that. Okay. You have a question?
Yes. I, I didn't see any thing on your drawings that might represent a patio area. Where people that are. I'm gonna use the word stain, but are patients within your facility. Had a small area where they could go outside to enjoy the nice weather, not the snowstorms, but the nice weather we have in the summertime. Have you given anything like that a consideration?
Yeah, in, in the. Core area, area, yeah.
Let's see.
See that?
Yeah, probably the landscape plan. Yeah, that's probably. Yeah, the area where we will have outdoor seating is. This area right here, because the dining room is right here. And there are two doors, there's a door here and a door here, and that's what the sidewalk is showing. But this is where the patio or terrace would be is off the dining room in that enclosed courtyard space.
Thank you.
And all of the other, at the end of each wing is an egress door. Those are only for emergency egress, there is no one coming or going and the exterior doesn't have handles on them. And this, this is the secure, quiet place right off the main dining area, day room and dining area.
Having had a family member that spent five years in a nursing facility. It was, it was very nice for them to be able to get outside a little bit with our help. You know, you go to visit, we took them outside to visit in the sunshine and stuff.
Yep.
And so I didn't see anything that I recognized to be that.
Yeah, the, the. Patoys are usually developed late in the game, you know, with different pavers and seating areas.
And I just didn't want you to forget it. I just, I just did not want you to forget that area like that.
No, and we, at the, at the Clarkson facility, there's a patio out the back with a fire pit. And it's right by, well, what I call Pine Knob, but the DTE theater, whatever. So when there's a concert at the theater, they're seating outside around the fire pit for the residents to go out and enjoy the concert for free.
Thank you, I think that's all I have.
Any other questions? Okay, what we will do is. Make a motion to open the public hearing. We will then take public testimony, and I've already kind of gone through the rules. Once that's completed, we'll close the public hearing. We'll get any further comments from the consultants and team. Review any correspondence that may have come in. Commissioners will discuss and eventually make a motion to approve or deny. With that, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, motion to open the public hearing? Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Okay.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is open at seven forty-eight. Again, any members wishing to address will come up. Give your name, your address and the position you'd like to discuss, and you'll be given three minutes. And all discussion is directed towards the chair. With that.
Hi, my name is David Vekus, I live at eighteen eighty-four Deer Path Trail. I'm also a director for the Lakes of Indianwood Subdivision Association on the board. I just had a few comments or questions for your consideration, I'm not expecting you to address them here, but. One concern I have is that the entrance to this facility is very close to Pathfinder, looks to be about a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet. There's quite a bit of traffic that goes out on Pathfinder every day, there's three subdivisions that use that Pathfinder entrance. You have Woodbrier, Lakes of Indianwood subdivision and two hills, so. During eight o'clock and four o'clock, when the shift is going to change at the nursing facility, they'll be competing traffic for the two driveways and being that close to each other. I would foresee being some conflict or, or perhaps safety issues. Second thing is, there are a lot of people on bikes who leave on Pathfinder, cross over to the safety path. I recognize it's not an official crossover, but there is no safety path that goes down Drainer on this side of the road to get you down to Pontiac to cross over. And so with the two driveways, people crossing on bikes, again, it could be a somewhat unsafe situation, just depends on, on the time of day. Last thing, of course, is that there's, with additional people leaving this facility, we have a lot of people who cut through. Use the paved roads through the subdivision of Lakes of Indianwood to get down to Drainer, or down to Jocelyn, rather. This would create a little bit more conflict, I don't think you can do anything about it, my main concern is just the safety of having the entrances too close to each other. I request that in addition to some additional, some screening for the lights that you are requesting along Pathfinder, you also request some along Yuracoi Trail. It's largely a meadow on this property, there is, there are trees. But the light will come to the south as well and we have some residents down there. We prefer some additional brick on the exterior of the building, I think you've already asked about that. If you could match the architecture on the facility that's over by Pine Knob, that would be great. And then just in, in general comments that we've had from homeowners as they've learned about this has been favorable. In the neighborhood about having a nursing facility, they were considering or expecting a subdivision. Could very easily still be a subdivision in the future, so I think people would prefer not clear cut, we realize we don't control that. But in general, the facility looks pretty good. And the last thing we request is please ask for no construction traffic to go through the neighborhoods, just to use the main, the main roads to get to the area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Van Hollaback, ten nineteen Yuracoi. I guess I would just like to pound a Dave's. Comment about the lighting, the south lighting, that would be great, I think we'll take that into consideration. I, there was one comment made about that the east was still developable, developable, even with the facility there, I'm curious about the south. Let's see. Other than that, when the RCOC, when you have them looking at the, the plan. I think the, the point about twenty-four in Drainer is, is a big one. That's all.
My name is Sam White, I reside at nine fifty-seven Malone Avenue. My concern here is, when I was looking through the plan, I saw that there was no hazardous materials. Expected to be on the site. Healthcare facilities generally. Almost always generate biohazard waste, which US Department of Transportation has tagged as hazardous material. And I was wondering what type of environmental impact it would have in packaging and moving that material, I'm quite sure would be on Drainer. And that is my question tonight, that I would like to know environmental impact and how they propose to dispose of the hazardous materials that they will generate. Whether it's just from batteries, mercury, bandages, needles, sharps, all that stuff. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing? I'll second.
We have a motion, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of things I wanted to talk about.
Okay.
If, if there is, you know, as I look at some of the conditions that we've been discussing.
Does it have to do with the motion?
Yeah.
Your comments have to do with the motion.
He's just closing the public hearing.
Yeah, this is just to close the public hearing.
Well, those comments for amongst the commission.
Nope, not yet, no, this is just, any discussion to close public hearing?
No, 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 thank you for the clarification.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed at seven fifty-four. Now we will take some more comments or information from the township consultants. So if you have any further questions, we'll bring the experts back up.
We, we just, you know, talking about some of the conditions that could be placed on this.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we clarify this, we're gonna add this traffic clarification.
Well, let me do this, because I've been taking notes, and so let me read kind of the way I've crafted some of these potential conditions and then we'll kind of get a. Yeah, that's what we're talking about, or let's tweak it this way, and then we'll get a consensus that that condition is something the board feels is appropriate. So the first one I had is that an additional condition would be clarification on whether or not the traffic analysis accounts for employee departure and arrivals during shift change. That's something I got it right, that's just kind of the note that I've taken. The board.
I just wanted to add to that about, I think that was me, I'm not sure. Does that need to be resubmitted to the road, road commissioner opening?
Here's, here's what I would say, if, if for some reason we, you know, there is a, there is a, in that clarification changes the numbers. Then it would definitely go back to our COC.
I just want to make sure that happens, right, doesn't, there's not a gap there to the worst point.
However, if, if we find that what they provided to you does, does provide for those things and they can provide clarification as to how it provides for those things. Our COC wouldn't see those numbers again, because I think the numbers is what our COC is looking at. So is the way I crafted it appropriate though, where it seems?
I think so, yeah, I just want to make sure that it doesn't get lost in the home.
Yeah.
Very important detail to the community.
No, 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 I agree, and this is as it relates to employees coming and going in shift change. That's the way I've, I've crafted it. We're good on the way that one works? Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, the next one I have is information on trash pickup and delivery times of day. A, is it a condition we want to put on, B, is I, have I worded it correctly, is it a condition that we want to put on?
I guess I would ask, is there an ordinance already enforcing?
I am not familiar with one in zoning, but that, but it's not always gonna be there, sometimes it's in your general ordinances and my apologies, I cannot speak to whether or not it is. So I, I cannot speak to that. I mean, essentially, we're asking for the information, they'll provide it, at that point in time, I will, then I can look into the general ordinance to see if it complies. And at the very least, it's available for you at final, if there's any kind of major concerns with it.
I think it's worth asking the question.
Okay. Another condition that I put on there, because they have alluded to it and I, and I think it's an improvement to the property, but we want to see on the site plan is that they. They show all outdoor amenities on the final site plan. Good. And then, I have a last, but now I see somewhere. No, those, yeah, those are the three that I have from comments that I've heard from the commission, are there any?
This is only my second week doing this, so I might have to, I'll ask the chair. The questions from the public comment, are we allowed to address those? To them about concerns that I have too, that they have?
You, you can address them with my tail.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah, that's what I'm saying. So, obviously, one thing that I would really like is no traffic going through, obviously, Indianwood. Maybe having a sign put up that they, maybe a road closed for through traffic for construction.
I want to make sure I understand, because I heard this come up before, and if I'm, if I am missing something, you tell me. I don't, I don't see where construction traffic or the site design allows any kind of through traffic cut through.
No, but with construction and, and they're gonna be using Pathfinder with their construction, if we could just have the construction guys stay off Pathfinder. Because ultimately, it's gonna take, you know, the road's gonna be damaged, it's gonna have to be cleaned, it's gonna have to be all that, so who's gonna be cleaning it and all that, vice versa, so.
I, again, I think it's a, I think it's a concern that's fair to put out there, and I think it's fair for them to hear. It's not anything I have control or through the ordinance, but I do know, because there's pre-construction meetings.
I might want to question that if it does get dirty due to construction, are they gonna bring sweeper trucks in there to clean it for the residents of the community?
Jim, I mean, we were.
Probably part of the soil erosion permit, if you see dirty roads, then we'll enforce that and we'll get out and. I know they have those sometimes, it's just. Excuse me? So I know they have that, but sometimes it's just not enforced properly, so I wanted to make sure that was enforced. And then also too, with the questions for the lighting. I've, I know, I know that they do in these, these communities, they have light screens that they put on, so it's not as bright for the community. So maybe, maybe you can take that back to maybe have a light screen put on the lights, so the light screens.
Oh, yeah.
You know.
Yeah, for final site plan approval, full photometrics are required and we will have that.
Yeah, because I know that was a concern with the, the committee here, and so obviously we heard it twice now, so I just wanted a little bit more verification. Obviously, that you guys are looking into that, I know they're gonna have to approve it and stuff like that, but that's a valid concern from everybody, so I think that's a good one.
Let me, just so that we can process this.
Yeah.
What I would say is, they've, they've definitely heard lighting, they'll put their plan together, we'll run it through our ringer. We bring it to final, and if there's a few additional things here and there that you want to see out of it that they're agreeable to, we can make those conditions at final, just so we understand.
And that's it?
Okay. Okay, yeah, so I have my three conditions that I crafted, I don't think I heard another condition, we addressed some concerns.
Yeah.
Couple of things, I know with like the, the question about road construction. I mean, obviously, we can bring that up during the pre-construction meetings and the, the. I mean obviously we can bring that up during the pre-construction meetings and the general contractor can really stress that their guys use it. I don't know with Pathfinder being a county maintained road, that we can say no commercial trucks through there. I mean, it's county road, technically they can, but we can really stress to them to keep them on drainer and then to just this driveway.
Yeah, and I'm not, my apologies, I'm not, I'm not first enough to give you assurances either way, what can and cannot be required. Obviously, they've heard it, basically we have some mechanisms in place in the building department to ensure certain things are happening a certain way. But do we know?
Right, and as far as the lights, I mean, yes, I definitely want to, you know, make sure we have all those. I did drive through there, I went all the way down Pathfinder, I drove around. I think there's enough mature trees that I don't think it's going to be an issue, but yeah, I would like to see those measures put in place.
Yeah, well, we'll give them the, the fine teeth call when the wedding plan comes through.
Sure, I have a question, not to put a, make a condition of any kind, but more of a clarification about hazardous material. Can, do you have an idea, the note on the document has talked about that, no hazardous materials. And I don't know the definition clearly, am I kind of, you know, biohazards versus hazardous material? And how that's addressed, right? Can you provide some clarification there?
I can't, other than the notes that they provided, if the applicant wants to speak to it at all, again, I'm not sure if you're able to speak to hazardous material transporter on site.
The only thing, the only thing that I can think of would be possibly oxygen tanks, even though they have fewer of those because of the concentrators that are available now, but there is room for the oxygen tanks. But other than that, I don't know of any hazardous, other hazardous materials that would be.
Those would not be considered.
No, but I think, I think.
Well, if there's.
I think that, I looked it up, it's used like dressings, bandages, wounded, contaminated personal protection like PPE, sharp needles, body fluids, soaps, materials, those are all biowaste. Considered, that's what they said, but.
I can have the owners provide the, their protocols to handle all that at the other facilities.
That'd be perfect.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I mean, we can craft.
It's a clarification.
We can piggyback that with the other garbage pickup question.
Yeah, I think we can craft a condition that, that accounts for additional information.
Thank you.
On the garbage pickup, do you have ours that you would prefer? Or that would be allowed, so I can tell the owners.
Let's, let me look to see.
Yeah, let me look at it already.
And we'll go from there.
Okay. If that's.
Yeah, no, that's good.
Alright.
None?
Well, is it okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Like construction comments we have. Can we go back to the?
Which one?
Page two, the one with the aerial photograph.
C two?
No, page two in the set.
I don't sure what I can, that's just, that's me searching somewhere. It's just going to take a second.
Yes. The next one, yeah, here we go. Okay, on the site, the original intent was the whole area here along Pathfinder and Iroquois, that whole L-shaped area is going to be left undisturbed, untouched. And so what we set was, we set a development area outline, which includes the entire area that there is regrading going to be done, where construction is going to be done. And so we set this line here. And in, in talks with the Douglas Company, the general contractor, they felt that they could handle all of the construction work coming up this entrance and being stayed in this area during construction. At the first submittal that we had, we were taking all utilities off of Drainer Road directly into the buildings, water, sewer and everything. After some initial comments from the engineer, we rerouted, all of the water and sewer now is coming off of Pathfinder and Iroquois. So what we've done is we've shown what I'll call an easement, just a defined area that will have to be used to trench the hole for the drains and everything. So these areas here also will be disturbed during construction, but just to put the utilities in. But the rest of this area should not have any construction activities going on at all. The intent is to keep, keep that in its natural state. And talking about the mature trees on site, this area here, this has a stand of mature trees right here. Originally, we had like a double lane parking lot in this area. But the landscape architect identified this stand of trees should remain. We moved the extra parking spaces over to this area along the back road so that this stand of trees could stay. And one of the engineer's questions was about how some of the pipes were angled across. We have water and sewer lines coming out of the building here. We've angled them across here to go straight down so that we could maintain that stand of mature trees. So that answers one of the questions that the engineer had. So, and, and what we've done was we've calculated the number of trees required for the full frontage on Pathfinder, the required new trees. And we've placed them along this development area. So, and a few extras, and so the, the actual buffer is going to be denser around the developed area. So the number of trees that the ordinance requires for this whole length from here to here will be planted in this area. So it will be a denser buffer. And as well as the Iroquois, the number of trees required along this property line will be planted in this area here. And plus, we have the existing mature trees. So we've, we've, which technically I think we could get some credit for the existing trees, but we're, we're adding the number of trees required for the full frontage to be condensed and planted here, providing additional buffer. And the, on the west side here, there was a question about the trees along here, we added some additional trees buffering here. And there is enough room for the additional trees between the road and the property line. There's a swale that goes down there, and the evergreen trees will be planted on the, actually the west slope going up to where the existing, the existing trees that are there. Oops. The, the buffer trees will be planted on the west slope from halfway up to the top, creating a denser buffer from the adjacent property towards the, the new facility. And someone earlier had a question about the fire trucks turning radius and stuff. We talked with the fire chief a couple of times. And he actually gave us the model of their largest ladder truck and their largest pumper truck. We've used that information for the turning radius on that one sheet where we have the, the circulation pattern shown. And the fire marshal is, is fine with that. They had some other comments about Knox block, Knox lot boxes and things, but the circulation meets the requirements for the exact vehicles that they have.
So as it, I think as it relates to us finishing up the conditions, I think the other one that we talked about that we would add is information on the handling of hazardous materials. So.
Hazardous materials, bioways. You might get, yeah, don't want to get boxed in on that.
Bio waste and hazardous materials. Okay. So with that, I got, I've got four additionals that we just went through. When the time comes to make a motion, if, if the planning commission does conditional approval, we'll have, we'll work with you guys on reading through what Susan has prepared for motions and stop you at the right moment, give you the conditions to read, let you finish, and go on from there.
Any other questions anymore? I know the one other discussion was the in lieu of payment for the sidewalk.
Yeah, I talked to them. You guys will need to make a determination tonight as to whether or not you are recommending the payment in lieu of the placement of sidewalks, safety paths on Pathfinder, Iroquois. And the safety path committee did recommend, is that correct?
Right, they did.
Okay.
Right. Okay, so we will move on to number seven, commissioner discussion. Any questions, concerns, topics you want brought up, any more further questions? Do it anyway? Okay. And, and just to clarify, I'm sure everybody knows, but the, the in lieu of payment was to not have to put, it's not on that. Along, along Pathfinder and Iroquois, to put a sidewalk down there, safety path down there, that basically would be going nowhere. And basically what it would entail is clear cutting a section just to put in a sidewalk. Which I know we've talked several times about, you know, the in lieu of, but in this case, I know I was on the safety path and I was in favor of it, so. You know, if that's something you guys want to discuss or you bring up, or any questions?
No, I think it's a good, good idea.
There are no, there are no sidewalks or safety paths within the whole Indianwood development, you know.
What it's going to do is it's just going to draw people there and we don't want them to go there and then have it end, so I think it's.
Yeah, great. Well, that and down the road, when this does get developed, it's just going to be torn out, so it's.
That is an important point though, is that you are, your payment in lieu applies to this development. If those other portions of the site came to development down the road, they need to show the sidewalk and safety path. And if at that time, payment blue is still an option, they can request another waiver at that time. But this is not waiving a future development's right to do it as well.
Correct, that is just for this developer. Well, if that's all the discussion, then number eight, I'll entertain a motion. It appears to be a very lengthy, and we're going to want to stop after number five to include.
If you, if you go through your, yeah, so if, what I want to do is. Motion relating to well bridge is going to be all of this. So when it says, facilities in the R2 district conditioned upon the applicant addressing any deficiencies noted by township consultants, the township fire department, and township administrator, in addition to, and then that's where, in addition to. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, and township administrator.
Okay.
And then after administrator would be.
In addition to.
In addition to, and when you get to that, I will read back to you what I wrote, so you can repeat it.
Okay.
And then after all, we get through all those lists, then you can say prior to submittal for final site plan approval. Does that sound okay, Susan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Then we just get to see who wants to read this lengthy motion. Great, with that, I will entertain a motion one way or the other.
Alright, I'll move forward. So I move to approve the special land use for, for well bridge of Oxford located on Drainer Road, P C twenty-four dash zero zero four, as required for a skilled nursing home and rehabilitation facility in the R2 district. Based on the following findings of fact as required by the charter township of Oxford, Oxford's zoning ordinance. Number one, the proposed use is compatible with adjacent uses in terms of location, size, and character, and will not negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood. Number two, it is consistent with the intent and purpose of the township zoning ordinance and master plan, and will enhance the immediate vicinity in the township as a whole. Number three, adequate measures are proposed to protect the natural environment, and the use will not place unreasonable demands on public services or create excessive public costs. Number four, the use is designed to ensure public health, safety, and welfare with no adverse impacts on traffic or infrastructure. Number five, in compliance with the special land use standards in the zoning ordinance, the facility will have vehicle ingress and egress directly into the county primary road, provide a minimum of three thousand square feet of land per person cared for, and all buildings will be set back at least seventy-five feet from property lines.
Keep going, additionally.
Additionally, I move to approve the preliminary site plan for the skilled nursing home and rehabilitation facility in the R2 district, conditioned upon the applicant addressing any deficiencies noted by the township consultants, the township fire department, and the township administrator.
Sorry, it's out there. In addition to clarification on whether traffic analysis, analysis accounts for employee departure and arrivals during shift change. Maybe shorten that up a little bit.
Want to give it to me in order?
If you could read my handwriting.
Alright.
So in addition to clarification on whether traffic analysis.
In addition?
To clarification.
Clarifications.
On whether traffic analysis.
On whether traffic analysis.
Accounts for employee.
Accounts for employee.
Departure and arrivals.
Departures and arrivals.
During shift change.
During shift change.
Information on the, information on the handling and disposal, and disposal of.
Information on the handling and disposal of.
Bio waste.
Bio waste.
And or hazardous materials.
And or hazardous materials.
Information on deliveries and trash pickup times of day.
Information on trash deliveries and pickup in times of day.
Trash pickup and deliveries times of day.
Times of day.
Okay. And to show all outdoor amenities on final site plan.
And to show all outdoor amenities from the final site plan.
And now you can pick that up at prior.
And then.
Prior.
To smittle for the final site plan approval.
Good job.
Nice.
I'll second that.
You got to read it when you say no. You say it all over again.
So we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion?
The second.
Yeah.
No. Alright, can we get a roll couple?
Sure.
Austin?
Yes.
Dur? Yes. Turner?
Yes.
Lincolnship?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Losick?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. And then the next topic is whether or not we want to do the in lieu of payment for the safety path. Somebody would like to make a motion one way or the other? Somebody would like to make a motion one way or the other?
Alright, I'll keep going. So I move to recommend approval of the applicant's request to pay a sum in lieu of constructing the required safety path. Along Pathfinder Road and Iroquois Road, P C twenty four dash zero zero four. Subject to the following conditions. Number one, the in lieu of payment shall be calculated as a sum equivalent to the actual cost of construction. Constructing the safety path, including permit, engineering and inspection fees. In accordance with section forty two dash one zero five B of the of the township safety path ordinance. Number two, the conditions shall be imposed requiring that any future development of parcels. Fronting Pathfinder Road and Iroquois Road, whether by the the current developer or future developers. Must include the construction of the safety path at that time. Number three, this condition shall be formalized in an agreement approved. By the township board of trustees to ensure compliance with these requirements.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion on this? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote?
Losick?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Lincolnship?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Dur?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much. Now we will move to number eleven. Ordinance review committee, twenty twenty five work plan.
Good evening, uh so tonight in your packet is the O R C review, uh the O R C. The ordinance review committee's twenty twenty five work plan. So the ordinance review committee is a subcommittee to planning commission that will meet once a month and kind of goes over. Any ordinance, uh typically text amendments, sometimes a map amendment. And works with the planning consultants, the engineers, the legal team to draft changes. To those either as an internal reaction to something that needs to change or an external response to a petition by a resident or a business. Uh or just something that we're aware of, kind of an easy example is if we keep getting zoning board appeals requests for the placement of a deck. Because the way our ordinance is written isn't clear, we would wanna bring that through the O R C and up to you guys. Uh so what you have in front of you tonight is kind of the proposed work plan for the O R C for the tw- twenty twenty five year. And it highlights high priorities, medium priorities and low priorities and I guess I would probably hope if I got to it here. Um, and so the process tonight is, is that the planning commission would make a recommendation to the township board. To approve uh the plan proposed by the O R C. Um after tonight, the planning commission does agree with the work plan, we will develop a budget for the township board to review and consider. Uh and when the township, then we go to the township board in March. And assuming that they approve it, then we can get to work on some of the items highlighting the plan. Uh one thing that you will notice is that the, when I get to it, the um. The high priorities list is a little thin and that's only because some of the priorities that are listed in medium. Or in other parts of the plan are somewhat not reliant on the current master plan draft, but are heavily influenced by it. Uh it's just a better justification for the O R C to bring something up after that master plan's been adopted as opposed to in some draft form. Your current master plan is the best master plan to reference. So the reason most things have gotten kind of knocked down the medium is you wanna get the master plan adopted. And then once the master plan's adopted, the asterisk at the top kind of allows us to make modifications to that work plan um as needed. Uh so with that, while I'm bringing it up, um I'm happy to answer any questions.
The first one. I'm gonna get those. My computer is, is not cooperating with this forty by five.
I'm almost there, but but go on with the question while.
The question was just clarification on the wording um of the first item in the high priority list. Um. There's some in the notes section.
Yeah, I'm just gonna go to my files. I gotta, I gotta make sure now that bad emails I write about Jim come up.
Were you read or were you wrong?
Yeah.
Getting ready to send them.
Okay, so my boss, but here, I'm sorry, Commissioner Losick, your question?
Yeah, the first one, um general requirements for private road slash section. And then in the notes, it talks about current circumstances, the local configurations would prohibit the issuance of a building permit. Which could be interpreted as a taking, can you help you understand them?
Yeah, so this is, this is really a reaction to um. Outdated land division practices, so in the township, we have, we do have parcels that don't have sufficient access to roadways. Uh we have parcels that the way that they're sized or the way that they they do access the road isn't compliant. And so in the past, when people have come in to do building permits on these sites, technically, they don't meet the standards anymore. We can't allow them to build, that gets into some gray area with taking. As far as like illegal, you are taking the value of this land from somebody because they can't get a building permit now because of a. A lot that was approved back when, but isn't, meets today's standards. Uh we have, at least in the year and a half I've been up here, we've had two instances where this has come up, it hasn't gotten legal. But it has been a challenge for the property owner to try to figure out what to do with the property. Uh so this is under to kind of work with the legal counsel in the, in the township to correct this.
Twenty years ago, I went through experiencing this situation. With a piece of property, it was on a natural beauty road, but did not have electricity. And the ability to get electricity onto the property was great in respect. We finally did it, but it took a while.
Thinking about, and one thing so everybody understands the process, the way that the work plan is structured allows us to internally track where it is in the process. Is it being drafted, who's looking at it, you know, once it's ready for review, it would be brought to the public. It would be brought to the planning commission during a public hearing, in fact, you'll have some next month. Do you guys recommend it, then it goes to the township board, township board votes to read it and then has one reading and then two readings. So at its quickest, once it gets to you guys, it's still three to four months from adoption. Just so you understand, kind of, this, it's not like that.
This format will also be the recording format. That we will pass on to the township, township board when they can see what things are.
And we need to make a motion to approve this tonight so they can go before the township for budget, if I'm correct?
Yeah, it would, whether it's an approval or a recommendation, I think either is appropriate, just so the township board knows that the planning commission supports this plan as presented. And like I said, my firm will put together a budget for the township to approve or deny, but they agree with the numbers, but. It's never been an issue in the past, but yeah, that's what we'll do for the March township board meeting.
Okay. And there's another, another thing we need to, is there another thing we need to approve or look at for tonight?
This is it for me.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so motion to recommend uh to the township board. The Oxford Township Ordinance Review Committee twenty twenty five work plan. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There's your recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, number twelve, communication committee reports, um ordinance review committee.
I mean, we. Nope, you're fine, you're fine, yep, we met today, um went over some just loose ends from last year. Like I said, you guys will see some applicable definitions, state regulated uses language in front of you next month, have a public hearing. Um, uh most of what you're gonna see next month is formality, uh that not highly controversial, it's just clarification on some stuff. And from time to time, the state amends laws that mean you need to amend your laws and it's pretty much a copy paste to what the state told you to do. So, but you still gotta go through the process of approval, but that's what you'll see next month.
Planner and engineering reports.
I'm gone.
Come on, yep.
Um this is more just for the new planning commissioners, um we provide a report, this was initially started for township board. But we decided to include it in the planning commission, um packets as well. So these are not everything that we're working on, but these are just, I would call them the major projects that we're working on within the community. From an engineering perspective, um generally, one page of it is municipal projects, which has to do with water projects, sewer projects, roadway projects. Safety path projects, and then on the second page are more of the private development things that you guys have. Uh generally approved or are in the process, and just to kind of keep you up to date, so on this particular one, we have McLaren. Sanctuary Hills, which is a residential development down Drainer Road, um Tullamore, which is another one. A lot of these are in the holding pattern right now, but they have submitted for a site plan. Or some type of uh application to this committee here, uh for this commission. So again, just an update more for the newer members there and this is usually in your packet with every meeting. You ever have any questions, feel free to give me a call or email me.
Thank you for this, John, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if that's, anybody else has anything else before we make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Sir?
I'll second.
All in favor? I'd be adjourned. Thank you.